Good evening. My name is Tanya Bowers and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission Meeting to Order. I would like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Tanya Bowers.
Present.
Joseph Campos.
Present.
Paul Mendez. Absent. Kim Lerman.
Present.
Abel Campos. Absent. Isaac Myron. Absent. Rachel Teal.
Present.
Jay Hindler. Absent. Jerry Cochrane.
Present.
Madam Chair, there are five members present and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to City Council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I would like to remind the audience, tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable PSC Channel 191 and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. This meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of tonight's meeting agenda available online on the City of Pasco website so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask the audience that you mute your microphones to prevent interruptions during our meeting. For those present this evening, when you are given the opportunity to address the commission, please raise your hand so that we know that you would like to address the commission. Speak clearly into the microphone and state your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening not only be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to the Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's meeting agenda needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. We as a Planning Commission need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to City Council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get the facts and opinions placed into the official record the City Council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. The next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from the November 16th, 2021 meeting. These meeting minutes were mailed out to the Commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to take a look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Jay Campos, I make a motion to approve meeting minutes as read.
And do we have any seconds?
Commissioner Cochrane, second.
Okay, it's been approved by Commissioner Jay Campos, seconded by Commissioner Cochrane. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We have a number of items that have previously come before the Planning Commission and they are here before us on the agenda tonight for us to obtain any further clarification from city staff for us to discuss these items amongst ourselves and to come to a conclusion for our recommendation to City Council. The first item is a code amendment, which is a request for the current lot fencing. And whoops, that was the wrong section. Thank you for telling me that. Okay, the next item is a public hearing. Let's go there. So the first item is a code amendment regarding corner lot fencing. And we will start with our discussion with comments from city staff.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm here tonight to discuss corner lot fencing again. We will start off with just going over today's current design standards. Currently, maximum height of fencing in front yard areas is limited to three and a half feet. In flanking front yard areas, there's two situations possible. If they're contiguous corner lots between two parallel streets, the maximum height is six feet. Under any other circumstances, it's three and a half feet up until the point it reaches the building line of the neighboring property. From that point on, it can be six feet. Furthermore, maximum height of fencing in rear side yards is six feet. To give an example of the situation where you have two corner lots that are contiguous and form that entire frontage between two parallel streets, you'll notice on this diagram that both houses are addressed not onto the shared flanking street. In this situation, six-foot fencing can extend out into the green flanking front yard area. The next slide shows a real-world example. On the left, you'll notice that the fence extends out to the edge of the sidewalk. It's a little hard to see on the overview on the right, but that's where the property line is located. You also notice that both of those houses have their primary accesses located not on the shared flanking street. So this is the situation in which you'd be allowed to extend your fence all the way out to the property line. The next slide, this is an example of when you don't meet that circumstance. The house on the right has their primary access and is addressed off of the shared flanking street. In this situation, six-foot fencing has to be set back to the building line of the house on the right for the property on the left. A real-world example can be seen on the next slide. On the street view image on the left, you'll notice that fence does not extend all the way out to roughly where that sidewalk is. It's set back to the greenhouses or the house behind its building line. And that can be seen in the overview on the right as well. So we have some new options tonight. Kind of went back to the drawing board and thought about how far could we extend fences out before we bring in the real question of safety? What's that line? But option one is the option that was proposed at the last meeting. When two corner lots form the entire frontage between two streets, neither property shall access the shared street. So we will try our best to avoid those situations. And fences greater than three and a half feet in height must be set back a distance equal to the underlying zone. So in the RS1 in higher densities, that's going to be a 20-foot setback. In the RS12 and RS20 zoning districts, that's going to be a 25-foot setback. And on the next slide, this is the real-world overview of that plot we were just looking at. You'll notice that house on the northwest corner, I believe of Babine, that intersection, their driveway abuts that property line. So having fencing that extends out all the way to the sidewalk would create a severe visibility concern when you're backing out of there, especially when there's two four-way intersections. On the next slide, we'll go over option two. Under this option, fences greater than three and a half feet in height must be set back 15 feet from the property line adjacent to the shared flanking street. You'll notice this 15 feet brought up a lot. After discussing among the planning staff, building staff, engineering staff, and kind of finding out what's that line, where do fences start to become real visibility concerns, 15 feet was the measurement that was determined. It's in line with our ClearView standard in the Pasco Design and Construction Standards. So under this situation, it doesn't matter what your underlying zoning is, as long as that fence that's greater than three and a half feet is set back 15 feet from that property line, it would be permissible. So on the next slide, I apologize, wording might be a little small. So there's a lot going on here. You'll notice that that fence is non-conforming. In this instance, it actually extends beyond the property line into the right-of-way and it butts the driveway of the brown house. Under current fencing design standards, the fence, the white vinyl fence would actually have to be set back about 15 feet into the start of the building line, which would effectively put, for example, that fence at your living room window. That doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. Under option two, you would have a 15-foot setback that effectively puts it at the building line of the dwelling and also provides enough clear view space for the dwelling behind it, the brown dwelling, to safely exit there without having to worry about oncoming traffic or any pedestrians that might be walking down the road. And option three, our final option, fences greater than three and a half feet in height must be set back 15 feet from all property lines. This creates a standard distance along all right-of-way lines. So what that would mean is that we essentially get rid of the concept of the difference of a front yard and a flanking front yard. If you have a property line that's adjacent to a street or any public right-of-way, then it would just need to be set back 15 feet from that property line. So moving forward. At last month's meeting, there was a lot of discussion about a specific development. In this case, that's the Haven Court Meadows development off of West Court Street. So I thought it would be a good idea to take some of the lots that have these corner lot fencing concerns, draw out what each option would mean for these lots, and kind of do an analysis of that. But before we break into the analysis, I just wanted to bring up a few things about not only the subdivision, but fencing in general. A lot of fencing problems are specific to a subdivision or the area. This area in particular is in the Riverview area. It's next to what used to be a county donut hole. And in these areas is where we find a lot of these issues. You'll notice none of this area has sidewalks. There's no city sewer here, so there's septic tanks, which causes issues even on the fencing material design. I also wanted to bring up that we're not talking about whether or not these lots are fencedable. We're strictly talking about where you can have fences greater than three and a half feet. All of these lots are fencedable. I know a concern that was brought up last meeting was the wall that is adjacent to West Court Street. That's an estate wall. It's entirely different than a residential fence in a way. It is a standard that was required at preliminary plat approval and is required of the subdivision plans. So typically, these fences go in way before any homes are built and before the land is actually even platted into individual lots. Those are required against any collector or arterial roads. West Court Street falls into that category. And it's why the fence doesn't continue up Road 56 and Road 60. So the first lot we're going to look at is Lot D. You'll notice that there's an access easement behind this lot, and that's the sole access point for at least one dwelling to get to Road 60. And this is an example of, you know, when we really have to be considerate of visibility because while it's not your traditional driveway, it's a lot that only can use this. And they have to have a safe distance, which would be that 15 feet. But you'll notice two lines. The blue interior line is where fences greater than three and a half feet would have to be set back under today's design standards and option one. The red line, which is closer to the property, would be where fences can be under option two and three and is a total of 10 feet closer. So that would increase the fencedable area with fences greater than three and a half feet by roughly 10 feet of width. The next lot we're going to look at is Lot E. You'll see it on 58th Court in West Ruby Street.
Sorry, I didn't say it into the mic. I just wanted you to use your mouse to show us where you were talking about. Thank you.
So this is, this is the lot on the corner of 50th Court in West Ruby Street. Similar to the last lot, the blue line shows where, under today's standards, in option one, fences greater than three and a half feet can be. And the red line, which is closer to that property line, is option two and three, again with a gain of 10 feet in width. Now, the third lot is the northwest lot on the corner of West Ruby Sheet and Road 56. And this is, this kind of shows how our current fence design standards can really vary depending on your neighbor's lot layout. So the blue line in this instance is where fences would be under option one only. The red line, which is 10 feet closer to Road 56, is actually today's standard, option two and option three, because that lot behind it is actually closer than typically would be to Road 56.
Andrew, I'm just going to stop you. Is this one of the exhibits or should I not be looking at my exhibits now?
It should be. The staff report that was mailed might have the exhibit numbering off by one. The one that was uploaded to the website should be different. And I, for the presentation, changed the direction of north so that it would be at least somewhat visible on the presentation because being long up and down was just wasn't going to fit here. And so the last one we're going to look at is on the southwest corner of that intersection. And similar to the first two. Yeah, gee. And under this, or the blue line in this case, similar to the first two is where current fence design standards and option one would place the fence and options two and three would be 10 feet closer to Road 56. So to summarize this, essentially, option one, the one from the last meeting, would not benefit these lots per se, just by the way that the lots are laid out, where neighbors' property or their layouts are. Where lots or where options two and three are going to give an extra 10 feet of total space. And at this 15 feet, that is the ClearView triangle for driveways and alleyways. An additional consideration that I would mention is that these are large lots. So typically, you're going to see structures like shops and garages. And we do permit secondary accesses. Under all of these options, one, two, three, current fence design standards, having that secondary access there even for the property owners themselves would still provide clear distance reversing or entering or exiting that property. And so we spent some time looking at these larger lots in the Riverview area. This is a property on the transition between Three Rivers Drive and I believe Road 56. I apologize. This is north of the highway. And something that I would note here again is that the property to the north was plotted and built in city jurisdiction, whereas the property to the south is actually in the northern county donut hole. So it's one of those larger lots. The house is set back pretty far and may be subdivided someday. This is an extreme example of how confusing our current fence design standards are. So fencing on that corner lot would have to be set back to that building line, which effectively puts that fence at your back door, at the middle of the house. So to give a good example of how each option would individually impact this kind of situation, the diagram on the right shows a red line at the middle of the house. That's current standards. The blue line is set back 20 feet, which is the underlying zoning district's front yard setback, which puts it at the building line. And in options two and three, the dash line is where it would be in the flanking front yard. And you'll notice the solid line continues around the front of the house.
I'm sorry, can you use the mouse to show me what you're talking about when you're saying the red, the dotted line and the blue line? I don't see a blue line on there. Thank you.
And so the line to the right of that, it's the kind of dashed green line. That's where options two and three would place that fence, with option three actually continuing up and around the property. And so to summarize, give kind of the breakdown of each option on the next slide, kind of put it in a table view. Option one, the one from last month's meeting, maintains fencing outside of neighboring properties' front yards. It provides the largest clear area view and it clarifies fencing code and design standards and makes it make sense. Option two would allow for extensions of fencing. It says greater than six feet. I apologize, that should be three and a half feet in height into neighboring properties' front yards, but it still provides a large area of clear view for traffic on the primary accesses. It's less restrictive than option one and the current fence design standards and would provide at a minimum between five and 10 feet of yard area for fences that are greater than, again, I apologize, three and a half feet in height. Option three would allow six-foot fences to be located anywhere outside of a space 15 feet wide adjacent to street right-of-way. It provides the minimum sufficient view for traffic adjacent to and on-site and is the least restrictive option. And so with that, I think we conclude the presentation. So if there's any questions and discussions, I'd like to open that up.
Thank you, Andrew. So Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments for city staff?
So I think just comments, I mean, we've gone, this is kind of, I think, the third or fourth time we've talked through this, and I appreciate all the work you guys have done because it's a really complex issue to meet, kind of balance everything. But it seems like to me, I mean, just from a comments, not a que, I don't think I have any more questions, but I think I, and we got, I think we have to arrive at what option we prefer if we're going to recommend the council. And so for me, I am pretty, I think options two or three are what I kind of feel good about because I think they strike a good balance between the safety issue and also allowing homeowners to maximize their yard. So I think I would be personally supportive of either option two or three. I, you know, I also think that there's a safety issue, but people that are driving cars also have a personal responsibility to look before they back out, right? And so you just can't put it all on the homeowners that, hey, my neighbor is stupid and doesn't look when they back out, and so I have to build a different fence, right? So there's a shared personal responsibility there. And so that's why I like options two and three, that it feels like a good balance between what the homeowners are asking for, I just want to use more of my yard, and what the safety needs are, which, hey, you got to allow people to see when they back out and look for pedestrians, and we don't want them to hit people, right? And so that's why I personally favor two or three. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochrane. Are there any other Commissioners who would like to speak?
This is Commissioner Lerman.
Please.
Looking at option two and three, I like that it lends to, one, that safety is addressed, but also second, that the homeowner has, has more use for their land, for their property. And so I think that would be attractive to many homeowners. I also like how well option three is neatly laid out, the wording on it. I think that would decrease the amount of confusion as property owners are trying to decide out their, their fencing and how to utilize their land. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lerman. Any other Commissioners choose to ask a question or state an opinion?
This is Commissioner Jay Campos. I don't want to knock, option one is, it looks like it seems to resemble our current requirements fairly closely, and that seems to have maybe not worked for the general public, but at least gotten us by for however long we've had it. And I'm really interested to see what the public has to weigh in before we, as a commission, have a thorough discussion on it. But I like Commissioner Cochrane's comments. I think you're right. Very much is a shared responsibility for motorists. It shouldn't be the sole burden of a homeowner to ensure safety. So great comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Jay Campos. Any other questions or comments? So I have, I have a question, Andrew. So the, we don't have any pictures of option two or option three because they're not permitted as yet.
That's correct, yes. Just, just the diagrams that are, that are there.
Right. And option, is option, option one is still, it's close to what's currently permitted, but it still gives us a little bit more leeway from that, right?
Right. So it's close. It benefits lots where, you know, say your neighbor has extreme setbacks on their property, it's not going to prohibit you from having a logical fence, for example.
Okay. All right. So with that, if we have no other questions or comments, I'm wondering, I'm going to open up the public hearing. So any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, now is the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and the city of address for the record.
Hello, my name is Ashley Atkins. And I, I don't know if you could pull up the lots again with the D's, the each of us on their lot. There we go.
Okay. John, you may need to come out here because we have some pictures. Our, Ms. Atkins has some pictures.
Before you switch over, can you tell us which lot you are? Are you? Are you saying?
I am, I'm lot D. Uh, 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 D as in dog.
D, okay.
I think he's gonna.
Switch him.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Here we come. Nice.
Uh, it's a little fuzzy, um. So I'm lot D here, over in this corner is our, is the back access that Ms. Roratore talked about. We have ten-foot easement till about right there. And it goes to fifteen and almost twenty in this back part. Because of the road, the road kind of, oh, excuse me, thank you. Because of the road, kind of, um, it's, it's narrower in here than it is back here. Um, so they do have their access back here, um, it is a, over a half an acre lot. Um, our fence right now is at the three and a half foot as it sets. Um, this gives a little bit better angle. That the stop sign is almost nearly parallel to where our fence is. So we have the, the setback already, but if we move it back fifteen feet. Um, and what you suggested, um, then we would have to rip out all of our fence from here. To this point, even though this is set back fifteen feet already.
Well, ju- Madam Chairman, may I interrupt for just a moment, please, th- there's no, thi- this is not a retroactive kind of code amendment. The things that have been permitted are going to be allowed to remain.
Understand?
Um, I'd like to add, um, to that, that's the three and a half foot portion.
Correct.
So that, that portion is permitted anywhere on the lot, um, so we're strictly talking the six feet.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, we want to add and have more privacy for our kids and our dogs, right now the kids can just hop over this. I mean, it's as, it's as big as, I mean, you could just literally hop over it. So it doesn't benefit us in any way. Um, the same thing with this lot, it's, it is not on. Your, um, your list of letters on your exhibit C there. Um, but actually, it's the first built house on Ruby Street, uh, closest to ours.
Okay.
Lot number sixty of Ruby, correct?
Correct, yes, so this is that house.
Sixty.
And this is, there are three and a half foot fence, and obviously the stop sign is way up here. So there's, there's visibility on both our lots, actually on all of our lots for visibility. Um, and the only garage, I mean, garage accesses is all on Ruby Street. So the other garage accesses are on the opposite side of the street for safety reasons.
So you would like to increase the height of the?
All of our development, we want to increase our fences to six feet. Right now, they're at three and a half feet, unless they are in any of the middle lots. Any of the corner lots in our entire development cannot have six-foot fences, it's at three and a half feet, regardless of where they're at.
So Andrew, which would it be option one, two, three for them to be able to go?
So I, I think wh- what your concern is, is increasing the height of the fence that currently exists. The three and a half foot fence that's along the property line. So in this instance, under all of these options, it would have to be moved back uh, fifteen feet from its current location. If it's on the property line. Um, and so, you know, the, the comment would be that this is a unique subdivision. Um, we do have to consider this code for the entirety of Pasco. Um, the code does not prohibit you from having a six-foot fence, it just standardizes the location that it can be located at.
In regards to, um, both cities, Kenwick and Richland, they do not have. The dwelling behind it to give access of where your fence should be. Is there a reason why the city of Pasco has that in their code?
I'm not sure of the origin of that portion of the code, I am not exactly sure when that code was last amended. Um, but i- is in line with the way that Franklin County does their fencing. Um, and we want to step away from that, that's why, um, all of these options would get rid of that, that provision. So that we can, you know, not worry about where your neighbor's house is for your fence.
Now, just coming here, on you, we were talking about the access on Court Street, and you said that that has to be put in. When the development started, the access, I mean, the, um, the block fence on, on Court Street, down at the bottom.
Typically, yes, um, it's part of the subdivision requirements.
And do you know what the easement is for that?
The easement for the fence?
Yes.
Uh, there is no easement, um, for that fence, it's generally placed at the property lines of those properties. Um, that abut West Court Street.
Okay, 'cause that actually has less visibility, we have less visibility pulling out than we would on our own lots.
Right, those, those are bound by the city of Pasco designing construction standards. And is typically reviewed by engineering staff in regards to visibility.
Is, I, since both cities do not have that in their code, and we, and city Pasco does. Is there a reason why we have that in there? I mean, what, what brought it on that the dwelling behind our houses decides where our fence should be?
Well, again, Madam Chair, we, we don't know exactly how this happened. Uh, we've tried to find how it happened, and it probably addressed some circumstance at some point in time. Much like we're doing right now with somebody that had probably an unusual or unique circumstance or situation. Uh, as Andrew mentioned, it does reflect, um, consistency with Franklin County. Many, many years ago, Franklin County and the city of Pasco, um, coordinated an effort to try to standardize development regulations. And for the most part, those have been adhered to through the last few decades, at least, uh. Through the growth management years from the nineteen nineties and beyond. Um, but again, we recognize that that isn't a very good fix. So as Andrew again mentioned, all three of the options, um, want to eliminate that. Uh, qualifier and establish, uh, one, two, or three as, uh, current standards.
But am I correct in assuming that, I think the choice this particular homeowner has given is. Um, if we were to go with option two or three, for example, would give them the ability to build that six-foot fence. But if we require them to rebuild and re-permit, not add to their existing is what I'm assuming is the case, right, yeah. So it would really be a trade-off then for the homeowner between the privacy I want. But then I have to do that in this code, I have to lose a little bit of my yard to gain that privacy. Is that really the essence of what we're talking, yeah?
Yeah, that's, that's it.
And option one, under option one, what would this homeowner have to do?
So under option one, uh, the fence that's greater than three and a half feet would have to be twenty-five feet from the property line. Um, that's essentially what would be required under today's standard. Um, I believe that house that is located behind your property is about twenty-five feet away. Um, options two and three would, uh, increase how close you can be to the street by ten feet.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Atkins, Commissioner? No?
Um, I just had a few more things.
Oh, please, yes.
Um, going up and down Ro- Road sixty-eight, um, it's kind of hard to see. Um, so McGill's is down here with the, uh, fire department on Road sixty-eight. Uh, this house just put a nice new block fence in, and this house right here is facing the opposite direction. Um, obviously, there's an easement here for the ca- of the canal. Um, but it's the same situation, they were allowed to put in their fence. There were six-foot block fence.
Um, to comment on that, that, is that Valley View Drive? That's, um, that's county property, and they don't require permits for that one. So I'm not sure if, um, they're in compliance with their code, or if they, I don't believe they permit for those.
Okay, so, uh, so off Road sixty-eight here, this is all county.
Just that Valley View, um, west side area.
Okay, so everything on this side is city.
Correct, yes.
Okay, and what about, um, what about, um, having a, a fence, a six-foot fence? Behind a school without sidewalks, no sidewalks? But it backs on to the school, so their backyard would be facing the school area. Um, for example, this one's on Bayberry Court, right behind it is, uh, Ruth Livingston. They also have a six-foot block fence, and the same thing with this house off Bayberry as well. These are new neighborhoods, they also have a six-foot fence with an easement going behind their house to a house. Just like in our situation.
Right, so it's, do you have an overview photo by chance?
I, well, it, the overview photo is just empty lots like ours, 'cause it's doomed, so.
I believe, and maybe, maybe Rick, you know, I know there was a variance for a fence. And I think it was the corner lot on Bayberry where, um, in the instance that because the school is there. And because of the way the school is permitted, they're allowed to have a six-foot fence if they wanted to, um, out to that distance. They were able to obtain through the hearing examiner variance, I'd have to check our records just to verify. Um, but under that, that variance standard, um, typically. dwellings that back up onto the school are allowed to extend their fence out to that property line.
And, and that is exactly what happened, the hearing examiner found that there were special unique circumstances not shared by other properties in this vicinity. And did in fact issue a variance for that fence.
Now, is it just for one or for both, 'cause they're both on corner lots off Bayberry?
I just remember one, one property.
Uh, and this, and I don't know, this might be county as well, 'cause this is right down the street from McGill's. Uh, so this is on Road sixty-eight. This is a six-foot block, block fence, and then they're facing the opposite direction again.
I apologize, yeah, without the overlay, um, and showing the, the city and county bounds, it's hard for me to comment on that.
That's on the east side of the street?
Yes.
Yeah, and is there, um, it's, it's by Argent, correct?
Yeah, so the opposite side of the street is where the, um, the fruit stand would be a little further down. For in the summertime, off Road sixty-eight.
Yeah, I'm still a little puzzled, but I, if I'm not mistaken, I think that is still in, in Franklin County. I, I really can't put a finger on the location, right, from that side anyway.
But it's also set pretty far back, even though it's a six-foot fence, it's put, set pretty far back from the road, right?
I can't tell.
Yeah, it's about ten, eighty, twelve feet. So our option for going back to lot D is switching. Going, because we have a fifteen-foot setback in the back of our lot. We would have to change the front part of our lot to have it jig back in to our property line. An extra five feet to have a six-foot fence, is that what one of the options would be for us?
If I'm understanding correctly, yes, you would have the ability to, you know, just move the fence back. That fifteen feet, and then you could go up to greater than three and a half feet. Um. I- is that essentially, I just want to make sure I'm answering correctly, is that, is that the question, or?
Well, I'm trying to find out what our options would be, I mean, could we apply for a variance for that extra five feet? Since we have the fifteen feet in the back? Or what are our options at this point?
You, you can apply for a variance, um, and if you'd like, I can get you that application, and it kind of goes over. Um, the exact points that need to be met to obtain a variance. Ultimately, that decision will be made by the hearing examiner, so I can't say whether or not the variance would be approved or denied.
Okay, 'cause we, we didn't have that option, they said that we couldn't apply for a variance before, so we do have that option to apply?
Yes, you, you have an option, you always have the option to apply for the variance, um, we just can't guarantee, uh, it meets the requirements to obtain it.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Alright. Are there any other speakers?
I was sitting quietly in the back, I, we are, my name's Maria Sandoval, and we are lot G. I'm not very good with math, sorry, working. And so, um, I'd just recap everything that, um, my neighbor here, Ashley, said. Um, we're pretty much in the same situation, we have the three and a half foot fence on the side of, um, Road fifty-six. So that's our lot there, um, I did not print off my pictures, so all I have for you is my nice little cellphone here. What did you, oh, thank you. So here is ours, and, um, this is our three and a half foot fence. And we, as we shared last time, you know, we've, we've lost, um, it, it's not obstructing necessarily. I know there was talk about maybe having a drone go out there, look at, um, different views of it and see if it would really obstruct. Um, I heard somebody say something about a simulation if it were actually the six-foot, so we're not asking to push our fence. Further on to the property line, what we were just asking is the same thing as our, our neighbor Ashley, um, is to extend it to the six feet. And so everything she said, pretty much, you know, we share the same sentiment, um, that's what we've been, you know, requesting.
And just to ask Ms. Sandoval, the top part of the picture, what street is that?
Down here, this part here?
Yeah.
This is fifty-six, so it'd be, it's like, there we go. So now it looks like the diagram.
Got you.
And so this is our side, and then our neighbor in the front who couldn't be here, um, F, he's the one with the little girls. That are toddlers.
Yeah.
And so that same side of his fence is three and a half feet right now. And like Ashley stated, you know, it's really easy, like I go there lean, I'm five foot three, I'm like, yeah, I could if I try, just climb over. Um.
So ma'am, do you under, so I think what, I think it seems like you have the same option as your neighbor. If we were to go with something like option two or three, it actually gives you a choice that you don't have now. Which is to move the fence back and then get six feet, the trade-off is you have to lose a little bit of your property, right? That's the downside, but that is a trade-off, if the privacy is the important piece. That the, the thing we're proposing in option two or three in particular does give you more flexibility than you would have without it.
The only other piece with it is that it would, by doing that, um, it would go through our septic. You know, I stated earlier, that is a unique development, it's not necessarily all the other good stuff, it has septic system. By moving it in even like, it would go right through it. And so if we're also allowed to do the variance, you know, we would, um, state that in there, that, that would be the why. Of not wanting to, um, move any further over if safety is still, you know, um, doable with how it is now.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandoval. So, Andrew? Um. Option, there is no option that currently would allow her to, them to go up to six feet?
Not at the current location of the three and a half foot fencing, um, on all the lots that we've. Not at the current location of the three and a half foot fencing, um, on all the lots that we've discussed, um, D, E, F, and G. Um, they would all have to be brought back under option two and three, um, fifteen feet, um, before they can extend to that, that height.
Okay. I, I just think that's important to clarify, cause as we're thinking about these three options, um, realizing this situation, even though it's, it sounds like it's pretty horrendous for these homeowners, wouldn't impact these three choices that we're thinking about right now.
Cor- correct, um. These, these options, they standardize the locations, but option two and three would be certainly the most beneficial option, um, for all of these lots. Um, it's gonna give that extra ten feet of space, um, as option one would essentially mirror, um, the current codes applicability to these lots.
Uh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one more thing, for on all of our lots, um, each one of ours, all of our septics are located on the roadside. So the fifteen foot going in would, it would go off, off all of our lines, so we wouldn't be allowed to put in a fence.
That's correct, um, specifically for block fencing.
Yeah, I, I'm not so sure that that's true, um, I would caution that, uh, we would, uh, definitely need to check with the health district. Because a, a block fence most certainly would not be permitted on top of a drain field, uh, a wood fence, I'm not so sure about.
Yeah, I did, um, I checked with our, um, building department as well and they said that it's likely, um, you know, they would also have to check with the health department, but wooden vinyl are typically, um, possibilities. Um, that's where the, the question of material comes in. Um, additionally, um, this isn't so much a privacy fence, but on these larger lots, we do have an allowance that, you know, at these locations that, uh, the fences currently are at a three and a half feet. If you wanted to increase the height to five feet, you could make it out of block and wrought iron and have it be eighty-five percent transparent. Again, that's not necessarily a, a privacy fence, but is an option for larger lots.
Great, thank you for that. Okay, so, um, I opened the public hearing, I'm calling for public comments, going, going, gone, okay. So, let's see what our options are now. So ultimately, Andrew, do you want us to vote on one option?
So I, in the staff report, I left language on, um, two possibilities, one, you know, if you wanted to, um, have us bring back more information, um, we would be asking for, uh, just a direction that you would like us to go into. Um, in case there was the, um, determination that there's a suitable option. I left some verbiage in there, um, that would fit that, of course, because there's three options, I don't have a draft ordinance. And if you'd like to see that, I can also come back to next month's meeting with a draft ordinance.
Okay, uh, so commissioners, do we need to have any more discussion?
Madam Chair, this is Jay Campos, I, I would like to elaborate, deliberate a little bit between us before we, we go for sure. Reiterate, custom of the conversation we had in the public hearing, it definitely sounds like the, the homeowners have the option to essentially A, do nothing, leave their fence as is, or B, apply for a height and a special permit request to maybe leave their fence where it is, or comply with whatever we choose to do, and this kinda goes in with what Mr. Hattori had said, is that this is a really specific development and, you know, I think it's important to consider what the public has said, but we're, we're making decision based on, you know, entirety of Pasco, not, not just this development alone, so. That's my initial comment.
Thanks, Jay Campos. I, I have to say, I liked, I, I mean, I think they're all good options, I actually like two better. Um, cause I feel like that's a, a good balance between, between one and three.
Maybe the question is, is do the commissioners present feel confident in going with one option? Or do we want to see, um, the code amendments or more deliberation? I guess that's really the core question, cause if all the commissioners feel confident that they would, they like one of the options, then we could move forward with a recommendation to council, but if they don't, then we should deliberate more.
Or we can come back with an ordinance and, um, uh, my guess is, uh, that lines out options two and three, uh, unless I hear differently, but it doesn't sound like option one is getting much favor.
Yeah, maybe that would be prudent.
Yeah, so let's, um, unless there are any commissioners who feel differently, why don't we put this on hold and you will come back to us with that language for options two and three? Great, and I would just ask, i- if it's at all possible to show us not just the overhead view, but even if it's a picture of what two and three would look like from like forward facing or side facing, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely, I can agree.
This is Jay Campos, I'll put Jay Campos on the same lines, make that comment off the nation to the public. If the public is interested in providing more comments, I'd actually ask them to try to submit them to the city prior to, so we can get all of their stuff put into the packets, it's a lot easier for us to review as opposed to looking at it on the overhead.
Thank you for adding that, Commissioner Jay Campos. Okay, so we are moving on, thank you very much for all the work that went into that. We are now moving on to our next agenda item, which is workshop. And the next item is, um, master file C A twenty twenty-one zero one one Plan Unit Development. And Jacob, are you gonna tell us about that?
Yes, uh, good evening, members of the planning commission, uh, you may recall that staff presented on a proposal to revise the recently revised Plan Unit Development Regulations. Uh, you may recall, actually a lot on this planning commission, most of twenty nineteen, uh, we, uh, went, moved forward with an amendment to the Plan Unit Development Regulations. PUDs in general are intended to provide opportunities for innovative and creative, uh, with quite a bit of flexibility in land development to encourage the use of new techniques, uh, resulting in more creative approach to developing, uh, lands here in the city of Pasco. And in that twenty nineteen, uh, effort, the primary focus was on reducing the minimum site area. The prior minimum site, uh, I believe was twenty acres, we've reduced that significantly to allow for more infill opportunities, you'll see that in the third bullet point. Um, reduced open space requirements and also again, the opportunity for more infill and increased densities. And so, uh, our effort, uh, this time is, uh, based on two, uh, actually, uh, they're in the application review period, but in this period, we've, uh, uh, re- received some feedback from both, uh, home builders and also discussions with staff on some additional refinements to make. So with that, uh, the proposed revisions in this effort are to, uh, streamline the application, submittal and review process at clarity for the development standards and, uh, uh, added flexibility for the development itself. And so we've identified a few and I, uh, this looks a lot smaller than I hoped for, uh, but I'll, I'll read through these. So we, staff has created a few preliminary proposed revisions that we would like to garner some initial feedback from the planning commission on, and I'll just go through these one by one. And the first is, is relatively simple, it's with regards to permitted uses, currently the PMC uh, only restricts the combination of these, of residential and industrial lands. This proposal would do that, however, we want to add additional, uh, uh, criteria for, um, the combination of both residential and commercial lands and also combinations of residential and open space or natural areas. And you'll see that, um, later on in the proposed revisions, how that may fit in. So this is technically not changing how it applies, but does add some clarity for those applicants. On the minimum site area, the only change would be that the site be, uh, contiguous, um, and identified within the phasing. So again, a, a, a lot of the theme from this refine, uh, this effort is refinement and clarity. And on the relationship to adjacent areas currently in that subsection of the code, there's a lot of language with regards to connectivity, access, multimodal connectivity, et cetera. We would like to keep that language, but define, uh, I'm sorry, create a new subsection for transportation and circulation that addresses all travel modes, uh, specifically with regards to non-motorized and emergency access. On the next slide, uh, with regards to density, our comprehensive plan was adopted, uh, not too long ago. And so the current PUD regulations do not align with our new comprehensive plan, so we intend on fixing that. And then along with that, making sure that the densities, uh, are compliant with our comprehensive plan. We would also, uh, like to use this as an opportunity to, to sort of pilot some additional, uh, flexibility on the density bonus. So currently, the PMC allows for a twenty percent added density, uh, for PUDs that meet the spirit of the code. However, we don't define the spirit of the code, and so we would like to use this again as an opportunity to, to define specifically what that could be. And so after some research across multiple jurisdictions on what they would perceive as, as not only spirit of the PUD, but what they use generally for density bonuses, a few examples could be dedicated of portable housing. Now that would be defined by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, so it's based on the area median income. Green or lead certified buildings, so that's more of the sustainable development types. And one that we've been trying to work on throughout most of our subdivision code, and you may recall this from the lot size averaging amendment, which is proximity to transit, schools, parks, uh, the general public land uses that folks in general would need access to. And so the idea is to allow for that twenty percent or a different threshold, if deemed appropriate by the planning commission, to be applied for those subdivisions, or I'm sorry, these, uh, proposed PUDs. Uh, if they fall within, uh, these categories or others, if the planning commission has any suggestions. Again, that is just a density bonus, it's not a requirement, a minimum or a, it does have a maximum, but it's certainly not a requirement and up to the proposed applicant to take advantage or not of that opportunity. Again, on lot coverage, we, the PUDs already allow, I'm sorry, allow most flexibility to all of our zoning, uh, geometry standards with regards to a lot. The PUD regulations, they require the establishment of what the lot coverages are, but we don't define what the minimum and maximums are. So similar to what we've done with other codes, we'd like to add that clarity, but also use, uh, what was done in the waterfront development district, which was have the lot coverage determined by the parking and setbacks. On the next slide, off-street parking. Uh, the, uh, proposal for this would be to, uh, add criteria for off-street parking requirements, uh, for reductions of off-street park requirements, excessive parking, uh, can sometimes, uh, or at, adds to the cost of the hu- of the housing itself. It also, uh, begins to help with our comprehensive plan implementation by allowing, um, or aligning our, uh, our parking standards with neighborhood characteristics and surrounding uses. And so similar to the density bonus, we're, we're certainly interested in hearing from the planning commission about reducing, and again, this is only an option, uh, for those developments, uh, that are senior housing, uh, mixed-use projects and/or projects that are, uh, have close proximity to transit and/or public land uses. And again, the idea is to begin to, uh, dedicate more land to housing versus, uh, maybe excessive parking. Again, it is, again, an option, uh, not a requirement. And, uh, also on the guest parking, uh, this one is relatively simple, it would be to remove the maximum guest parking requirement. Our initial intent was not, was to not overburden a particular, uh, s- uh, application with a, uh, too much requirements for max, uh, I'm sorry, for guest parking. Uh, but we've gotten feedback from those that are trying to use the PUD and this actually has been a little bit challenging for them. So our idea is to simply eliminate the max parking requirement, guest parking requirement. And then add criteria for guest parking, uh, on the minimum side when it's not provided with the use of a private street, because our private streets in the PUD code don't require off-street parking, so it kinda balances that out. So on the next slide, we go into private streets and again, additional clarity with regard to the cross-sections right now in the, in the, uh, regulations. It's a lengthy paragraph, we would like to simplify that. And then we would also like to, uh, uh, again, utilize, uh, street connect, you may recall this from the street connectivity effort, which is still ongoing, um, a maximum length without a break, so, uh, I think in the staff report, there's an example of six hundred feet. And that could be, uh, broken by either additional park space, obviously a dwelling unit or a parking space, but some kind of break. Um, because with the setbacks and, uh, and, uh, heights being allowed to either de- decrease or decrease, but we certainly want to avoid narrow, uh, kinda canyon-like developments. And so the idea of these breaks is not only increases circulation access, but certainly will add or decrease the, uh, the feeling of being in a canyon, if, if that makes sense. And, uh, this is a pretty big one on the amenities and open space, uh, we would like to add some basic standards and definitions uh, on the criteria for qualifying open space areas to uphold the purpose of the PUD itself. So this, we would like to, uh, create a new subsection, a subsection and create standards on the size and location, an example I saw in one municipality was that fifty percent of the open space must be contiguous with, uh, no portion less than seventy-five feet wide. And what that does is it ensures that we don't have little pocket green areas that technically are green or open space, but not necessarily usable. Uh, and with all of the reduced requirements and added flexibility, we, we don't want to have the PUD turn out to be a sort of a, um, I, I guess, to, uh, deviating too much from the spirit of not only the PUD code, but certainly our general subdivision guidelines. So it's to add some basic standards on that. You'll also see a, uh, something that we're interested in hearing on, uh, from the planning commission, which is in a PUD, technically most of the or the open spaces dedicated and maintained by the, uh, tenants or the owners of the, uh, of the project. Uh, we are interested in hearing some feedback where if there is a dedication to the public of that green and open space, uh, that there may be an opportunity for either reduced or, uh, mitigation of park impact fees, which would reduce the cost of each permit as well, so very preliminary, but we're certainly interested in hearing, uh, your, your comments on that. And then the last one, and one that we're certainly interested in, uh, from a staff side, is just streamlining the review and approval process. Uh, right now, the way the code is written, and this wasn't touched in twenty nineteen, is rather lengthy, uh, and, uh, it, a lot of duplicate language, uh, in this portion of the code. Uh, and we would like to streamline that process, simply so it, it would take a lot of text and, and essentially bullet pointed so that the applicant knows exactly what they have to, uh, uh, apply with. For example, TIA and kind of the, a traffic impact analysis and all of your upfront information when you apply for a PUD, but also uh, what the per, view process is like internally for staff and also in the public hearing process for a PUD. And on the next slide, uh, just kind of as an example, variety of, actually, um, these are from a PUD that I actually visited recently in Atlanta, Georgia, so long ways from here, but really innovative designs out there. It's a forty or sixty acre site and they've got both, this is a mixed-used PUD, which is what we would like to, uh, also emphasize as well. But you, you have a variety of detached, attached housing, uh, homeowner housing, rental housing, condo, townhome, cottage style, kind of the whole gauntlet really, but some really great public open space, in fact, that's the part of an amphitheater in the bottom left. Lot of green space, circulation patterns and pathways. And I think we would be able to achieve that at least in theory in the code by, by adding some clear standards for what that would mean. And on the next slide, just some next steps for staff and, uh, also from the planning commission, which is, uh, our intent today is to gather, uh, some feedback from the planning commission. And then, uh, for the January planning commission meeting, we would prepare a notice for a public hearing. We would distribute our proposed, uh, revisions to the public and to stakeholders and begin preparing the, the preparation of the State Environmental Policy Act checklist, the SEPA. And then, uh, again, following feedback at that public hearing, come back to the February planning commission meeting, either with a public hearing and recommendation, or simply just a, uh, a public hearing to be continued. Uh, so with that, this concludes this presentation and certainly happy to answer any questions. Uh, so with that, this concludes this presentation and certainly happy to answer any questions from the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jacob. So commissioners, any comments? Feedback we'd like to provide? So just a couple of questions. So you were saying you were, part of this is we're trying to cut the acreage that we can have more opportunities for these sort of PUDs with infill?
That, that actually was already completed in the twenty nineteen, the twenty nineteen effort.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, I, I just had a more educational question for me. I don't, I, I saw in the language you were talking about in the density portion, clarifying, um, minimum maximum densities are defined by gross density. Can you just, it's more, I don't know what you mean by gross density and how that's calculated and, um...
If the, if the gross density would refer to the total area, uh, so it'd be, it's, it's a little bit more simpler in terms of calculating. When you look at the net density, it's, it's the right-of-way, uh, potentially park or space that's not usable by the development itself.
So yeah, the, the net is when you subtract all the things they can't do.
Correct.
Do with, okay, that makes sense. And then the other compliment, I, I love the, in the amenities and open space, I love the idea of providing an incentive that will reduce your permit fee if you dedicate open space to public. So I, I, my feedback is that's a great thing to always create public and, or develop or incentives for, for public benefit.
Commissioners? Well, I can also say I love the idea of reducing the canyons. Um, and I, I noticed the part about the private streets. Um, I just know how problematic we've, the pro- those private streets have ended up being when it comes to, um, snow and maintenance and turning around in there. So I think whatever we can, if we have to have them, whatever we can do to try and make sure they can be, uh, navigatable, um, is really important.
Yeah, and, and right now, private streets are only permitted in PUDs, and that's because the only place they have standards are in the PUD regulations. Those were added in the twenty nineteen effort. Now, I do know that staff in general, through the effort on the Transportation System Master Plan, has, uh, been looking at potentially different cross-sections for local access roads. And I have, uh, seen some PUD, uh, PUD, uh, regulations not too far from here, actually, um, in the, in the, uh, Waukam County area with, uh, much smaller footprint for the cross-sections, uh, that are public streets, but are, are smaller or in terms of the right-of-way it takes. And one of the benefits right now that I think some of the applicants view in the private streets is that it, it's less space dedicated for right-of-way or, or street, uh, and more for the actual development. So staff can certainly maybe take a stab at looking at coming up with, uh, appropriate smaller cross-sections for public streets. Currently, private streets, uh, are only permitted when you cannot achieve the minimum density of a PUD. And, um, although it is, uh, expressed in the code, but maybe not as clear as it should be, PUDs cannot prohibit the extension of any public roadway. Uh, so if a street is already to your east or already to the north, that street shall be expected to continue in that direction. And if you can meet the minimum density with, uh, your public streets, then that shall be the expectation. So we, uh, uh, that's again more on the refinement and clarity side, but we can also look at different cross-sections, uh, for public streets, but we'll check obviously with, um, our engineering staff to make sure that that would be appropriate and also our, uh, our fire department.
Great. And with the required off-street parking, I guess that would, that would mostly be, I guess it would be off-street parking rather than guest parking, but I just would wanna make sure we avoid what we're finding in central Pasco, where we don't necessarily have enough parking for depending on what the density is within a house. Great, okay. Commissioners, any other comments?
Yes, Commissioner Laraman. To add on to what you're talking about, Chairman Bowers, um, also, communities change of who lives in, um, the planned houses of the past. And so, um, at one point in time, maybe, um, a large group is using the transit system, and so the, um, parking is not such an issue. And then maybe later on, um, we have changes in our transit system or, um, just new people move in and it's not desired for them to use the transit system. And now we're in a situation where it's not enough parking. So I kind of, kind of hesitated about, um, moving to, uh, one dis- um, one, uh, guest parking for a six homeowner's situation.
Yeah, on, on that comment, Commissioner, that would, the one per six with regards to guest parking, not the required off-street parking. Um, so on that one, it's removing the maximum guest parking. Uh, what happened was we had a proposed application that exceeded that. Now we've allowed it, uh, but we want to remove that constraint on a proposed, uh, application. It, cause the, the applicant and the developer will know more about their intended use than, than we might try to portray in the codes. Our idea is to increase flexibility for the applicant and the development itself, rather than us prescribing perhaps an arbitrary number on, around it.
Thank you.
Hearing, no more comments? Do you have what you need, Jacob?
Yes, I believe so.
Perfect. All right, so let's move on to our next workshop, which is annual comprehensive plan amendments.
Good evening again, members of the planning commission. This is just a memorandum to the planning commission announcing that the city did open up our applications for comprehensive planned amendments for twenty twenty-two. That, uh, we are permitted once per year by the State Growth Management Act to change the comprehensive plan. And the city has an established process that allows for that to occur. And there's two components, uh, and this was a recent adoption by the planning commission and council in twenty twenty-one. The two components are, number one is the establishment of the applications. So, uh, applications are due in May. And then we take these applications to the planning commission, uh, to, uh, recommend established of, these are the applications for amendments. It goes to council. And then it goes back to component number two, which is the actual evaluation. And so there will be a staff review, and then they'll come back for a public hearing at the planning commission, a recommendation on each, uh, applicant or application itself. Keep in mind that these are to happen concurrently. So what happens across the street will impact you. What happens across the neighborhood may impact you, that, that, uh, that, uh, will come into play. And then, uh, final, uh, decision by the, by the Pasco City Council. So on the next slide, just, uh, a timeline of what this looks like. So we opened up the application period on December first. Applications due in May, and then May and, uh, throughout the spring, we take these to the planning commission and council for the establishment of the docket. And then the evaluation of the applications happens in the summer, uh, in fall of twenty twenty-two. And so we just wanted to provide this to the planning commission. We do expect a lot of applications to come in, not only from both the private side, but certainly from the city, uh, as we look to sponsor a few, uh, of applications ourselves with, uh, regards to the housing action plan that is, uh, underway. The, uh, downtown Pasco master plan, the Broadmore master plan and environmental impact statement. And we're also, uh, looking at refining some, uh, some nuances within our zoning and land use that exists in central Pasco and in some of our, our, our other corridors as well, to fix that as well. So we're looking at this opportunity to take, uh, just certainly just to announce that this is occurring and that will likely have a fairly, uh, active amendment application process, uh, within the next coming months.
Thank you for apprising us of this. So we will later in the second half, nearly the second half of next year, we will have a lot more, a lot more work to do. Perfect. All right, so there are no other items on our agenda. Um, so with that, I would like to wish everyone happy holidays and a happy new year. And I make a, I move to adjourn this meeting.